Okay, we'll call the work session for May thirteenth to order. Apologies for the fact we have no video recording of this, but we'll put this up when we can. We're gonna get some printouts here before long, so you have something to follow along with. Spencer, take over.
Sure, so, yeah, I had a very nice presentation, it was the best one you would have ever seen.
Oh yeah.
Can you hear me? It's all tight.
The system.
So Jeff's gonna print us off, so, some maps, but maybe I'll jump ahead and then we'll come back to that last. So, last time we talked.
I want everybody to know that I can, if you guys wanna scoot forward so you can hear, because we don't have the.
No, audio, video.
Our audio, video system decided to go on the fritz, and so we're on the phone with their specialist as we speak. So hopefully we get it up and running sometime during our meeting tonight. So, two meetings ago, I believe, we talked to the city council about some proposed changes to our homeless camp. We talked about some policy changes, as well as some location changes. Originally it was to move it from, to expand the location from where it currently is, around the recycling yard across the street on Alder Mill Way, to some property the city recently acquired. However, Councilor Morrissey handed out to the council some ideas he had, and staff took some time to review that. And in working through that process, we think Seth's identified a better location, and possibly what could be permanent location for as permanent as our camp needs to be. And that is located on the south side of the Public Works Yard and Public Works Building. Jeff's, I had an image to show you, we'll wait till Jeff gets back from making those copies.
Looks pretty dark over there.
Yeah, there's no lighting, so. So maybe I will jump ahead, and so the purpose of this discussion was to hold, one, to talk about the new site, and two, to talk about some changes that we'd like to implement along with the new site. Changes to possibly the ordinance or the policy. So going through those, a couple of things that we wanna do. The first is, our current ordinance states that we can enforce our camping ordinance through citations, and also through denying campers the ability to participate in the program. We have, for the most part, been using the citations process, but as we have previously discussed, it is not very effective. We can cite individuals, it's very rare that they will come to court. And if they do come to court, and they get a conviction, it's a twenty-five dollar fee, which is rarely ever paid. So there's not a whole lot of teeth. In fact, one of the issues came up in December that we had someone that had broken some camp rules, and the policy station needed three citations to be considered to be suspended from the camping program. And that person in court asked for a public defender, and then said that they were gonna be on vacation in California in the month of December, so wouldn't be available to come back in court. There's a lot to unpack with that sentence. And that march worked better, so our police department was gonna have to wait three months to hear that, so they could get the citation ruled on, so they could move forward with a suspension from the camping program. So there's a lot of that that just doesn't work, and is a waste of everyone's time. And so, really, I think what we propose are some changes to say, we're not, we're gonna hold the option to use citations as needed, but since the ordinance currently allows us to enforce rules through allowance to participate in the program, that's would be our main focus. And so, instead of three citations that need to be suspended from the camp, it would be three notices of rule breaking, or something like that. It's not, it's not an ordinance or anything, it's just a camp rule. And depending on the number and the severity, we would consider a suspension from the camp. That could be anywhere from one night, to a week, to a permanent suspension, depending again on the severity of the infraction of the rule that was broken, and the frequency of that. So we think that will give our police department better ability to enforce some of the rules that have been difficult to enforce so far. Any questions or comments or thoughts on that?
No, I think the reason for those in the first place, and those ordinance, the ability to write tickets was to have some kind of order in the camp, and, you know, to make people aware that this is not a permanent residence, and there's rules, because most of them don't want any kind of rules. And that's why some of them feel intimidated by others. So I think it's whatever we can do to enforce those is good.
Yeah, and I think, I think something you alluded to, I think one of the benefits of better enforcement will be a safer environment for some of the campers in the camp who are following rules, but also it's going to be better for any, you know, neighbors to the campsite as well. Any other thoughts? I've got plenty of things else to go through, but.
My only question would be, it seems like we're moving from a structured escalation of punishment, discipline, whatever you wanna call it, to being a little more unstructured. And so I'm just wondering what we have to ensure that we're enforcing this fairly.
So I don't think we would, the actual enforcement would be any different in terms of what we currently do from citations to kind of rule enforcement. I think we would be exactly the same, it's just that we would not have the courts be involved. It probably makes sense, as we consider changes, to put some structure into it, but also leave some room for judgment of individual police officers and the police chief who ultimately make determinations.
I would like to see a list of types of infractions that would result in immediate suspension, so that the campers are aware that these types of behaviors will just result in you being removed.
Yeah, we can do that. Typically, chief, it's typically, a permanent suspension has been typically for violence in the camp. What are, so, any other thing that comes to your mind?
Assault of behavior, or again, yeah, just the disruption that could turn violent, tumultuous type of stuff is gonna be your higher level type of suspension, or emergency. But otherwise, you know, not keeping a camp clean, or whatever lower level issue usually results in multiple warnings, or what have you. And for consistency, it has been, anytime an officer not coming to me and says he'd like to suspend somebody for whatever reason, he kind of explains it out, and going back to Councilor Salzmann's kind of comment, is my personal opinion, I'm not who we are, whether we're doing it for everybody else, we don't obviously care reasonably, that we're not just seemingly one person out versus somebody else, and staying consistent with other suspensions.
So we have an ability to keep a record of that, and then review that before we make any other determinations to ensure that we're being relatively consistent, while at the same time, it's not like we have to be strictly exactly the same if there are circumstances to a particular case that warrant less or more severity, so.
Flexible.
Yeah. With that, let's jump back to the actual layout. I think Jeff was passing that to you, and to others in our audience as well, because it's more if you can. So if you look at the, this site, this is all of the Public Works Yard. The blue rectangle in the middle, that's our Public Works Building. And you can see the red rectangle in the middle, that's our new fire tower. And so the proposal here would be to move the camp to the southwest corner of the Public Works Lot, and to access the camp from Avenue V. A couple of things to point out. The current site, as proposed here, would allow for thirty tent sites. That is the exact same number as we have at our current site, so not making it bigger nor smaller. With that being said, as we discussed previously, we would designate this site by building, or placing eco blocks around the specific designations, so that there is a clear line of what's inside their camp and what's not. The other ability is, it gives us the ability, if at any point we want to reduce the number of campsites, we pick up those blocks, remove them, and we can do that. So for example, in the middle, you have this island of sites, and there's two on the south side of it. Those could be removed to give it a little more room, and that's a judgment call that we can make at the time. So this would allow a service vehicle, like a city vehicle, to access Avenue V, come in and actually do a loop around the camp, or maybe a patrol vehicle could come in and do that. It would be completely fenced off from the Public Works Yard, so there would be less of a chance for trespassing and other things like that, with a gate on the east side. And that gate could be used for Public Works, to access the site for cleaning and other purposes, and to, for a garbage truck to access those two dumpsters, that are the two green rectangles. And then there's two restrooms there in the south, over the bottom right-hand corner. Would be easily accessible to a service vehicle there. Couple other features, we've designated something called a temporary overflow in the bottom-left corner of the site. So the idea here would be, we have our sites with the eco blocks for those who have a three-week permit. However, if that site is, if those sites are all full, and we have someone who needs a site, we could issue them a one-night camping permit, they could go in that one little corner, that can probably accommodate six to eight tents. And it'd be a one-night permit, and that would be it. It also could be, if they say to the officer, here you have a camp, we're passing through, the officer can issue them a permit for a one-night, but not necessarily, you know, here's a free place today for the next three weeks. So we think that would hopefully encourage those who are just traveling through that this isn't the destination for them, but we do have a spot for our local homeless population. Couple other features to point out, we would, we would have parking for permitted vehicles, so campers that are vehicles that are currently in the Mill Ponds parking lot. We would have them park on Avenue V. And so the proposal would be, we would close down the parking lot at the Mill Ponds for vehicle camping. Only allow it on Avenue V. In this case, we've, we're not gonna hold our hope to it, but we would, it's suggesting we put it on the north side. We would actually go in and strike actual parking spaces, like you'd see on Broadway or other streets. And so, a couple of rules that we're proposing we'd go with that is, one, your vehicle has to be able to fit in a normal parking spot. If your vehicle is too large to go in a parking spot, then it's not able to participate in our program. But you would be able to apply for a tent site permit if you want, but that we don't have an obligation to allow thirty-foot vehicles and things like that.
And we're just talking on the south side of Avenue B, right?
Sorry, I meant the north side, I said south, but I meant the north side.
It's written on south on here, it's drawn in south.
It's drawn on the south side.
Okay. Either side, the proposal would be to.
Is there a number of?
I think we can do five, is the proposal, we'd have to go back and actually.
Those would all just be a one-night.
Yeah, so what's the other proposal, is that for the vehicles, since they're all licensed, registered, and everything, that it would be a, cannot park there before a certain time, eight PM or something like that, and then must be out by seven AM, or something along those lines. And so, during the day, you would not see any of the campers park there, they would need to go elsewhere. The other side of the street, we would, we would notice for parking for only authorized service providers, so whether it's a city vehicle, or an approved service provider, like the Bob Team at Providence Hospital, or Clots of Community Action, and Clots of Behavior Health. Basically, we could issue them some rear mirror hangers with a permit, or something like that. And so those would be the only vehicles allowed. One of the benefits of this layout, we believe, is that means that there is no parking, there's no unauthorized parking anywhere within the campsite or along Avenue V. And so, talking with our police department, that's, so, let's say, for example, we have someone with nefarious ideas of selling drugs in our camp, or buying drugs. That is a long road that they could not park their vehicle in. We would sign it to have steep fines for anyone found parking there. And so we think and hope that that would discourage. You would have to risk parking your vehicle on Avenue V, it'd be very obvious if that vehicle's not supposed to be there, or park somewhere else, and walk all along Avenue B to get inside. But we have some other camp policies that would help to discourage that behavior.
How hard would it be to put a camera that takes pictures of the vehicles that come back?
I think cameras on the top of that, of our building, need to go there.
I'm talking about vehicles coming, coming down the road.
Yeah, but if you had a camera, you could see.
Because then we know who our providers are, and we would know who the others are.
Right, I agree.
Let me circle back to cameras a little bit.
Sure.
With that said, anything, Jeff or Dave, chief, anything about the site in particular that we've discussed that I haven't mentioned?
We'll work on new ones, so there's.
We haven't seen them yet.
So, so part of this, the benefit of this, and I think, I'm sure it's what Councilor Morrissey was getting at, is getting the current camp out of the current neighborhood, but also away from the recycling yard, which is an added problem of both our campers retrieving things from the recycling yard, but also people using the recycling yard as a donation site for people homeless, and just collecting a lot of junk and debris and things like that. So it gets it out of that neighborhood, obviously, it will affect the new neighborhood. We think that there are, there are things that we can do on our own site to protect our property and our employees. The negative effect would be to the neighboring properties on Avenue V, to the north is Truckee's. To the south, there is a, it's a giant blackberry patch, and so pretty accessible. And then we have the new hotel that looks like a VRD place just to the south of that. But there is, it would take quite a bit to go through that patch.
There's one residence right here.
On the highway.
Right, on the highway.
Right. But I don't think they're right up on Avenue V, I think they're down just a little bit.
Yeah, I think there's a space between them and Avenue V.
Mm-hmm, there's a lot, there's a lot.
See, there's a big lawn, and then this is the house.
Right, exactly.
This is Avenue V.
And that's a, that's a very big one.
Fence in the road.
We haven't really talked about that yet. If the council liked this site plan, we would have, add our project manager go and kind of put the project together, what needs to be done, and put the budget together. And so the full scope of that, we can do what we want. We could, we could fence in the road. I think that there is currently some trail access from the Mill Ponds Trail around the city's property, and to the east side of Avenue V. And I think one of our goals would be to try to make it less of a connection between our homeless camp and the Mill Ponds Park. And so, to the extent that we can extend the fence out, I think we would like to do that. The blackberry bushes may be their own natural.
Fencing.
Fencing, too, so.
So if we.
Oh, I should say, on Avenue V, there is an RV park at the back of Truckee's.
Yes, there is.
And there is an access off of Avenue, there are two access points off of Avenue V, one of them being on the very eastern side, closer to the entrance to our site. And so that would likely need to stay open, and fencing along there wouldn't do much good. But we would work with Truckee's to see if that's absolutely necessary, and things like that. I think the other thing is, in terms of scope of our plans, Avenue V isn't fully developed, and so we need to widen it to make use of all of it. There's not, it's not actually connected to the Public Works site, so there is some significant roadwork that we need to go in.
So this becomes a, pretty much a one-way in, one-way out.
Yeah, we would need to, I'm sure, create something, some way for our vehicle to be able to have the wit to turn around and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd have to run it through with our fire department, and things like that, and come up with solutions that makes, make sure it's, it's safe for people living there, and also any of our service providers.
This little parallelogram that's south of the homeless camp, what is that area?
So that's property that I believe is technically part of the Public Works Lot. However, it really goes into the Mill Ponds Park. And there's a significant elevation change going down, so. There's a current fence where you see the shaded area, and so we propose to keep the fence positioned, placed in the same. However, almost, I would say, almost none of the fence around Public Works Yard is doing much good. It's pretty old and falling apart, and so we would need to refence the area. There's quite a bit of grading that needs to happen on this corner as well.
It's chain link, right, kind of chain link? And if we're thinking about fence, are we thinking about at least six feet high?
I think we've discussed eight feet high, but, I mean, we would do something that makes it pretty secure.
If we were to adopt this location, what would you propose we do with the city property that we have on Avenue S?
So the property that we just purchased, we could always, we purchased it because of its proximity to Public Works. It could be used for homeless camping, it could be used for storage. We're never gonna have a shortage of uses for space. And so, the current budget contemplates a significant structure on the, on the south side of the Public Works Building to get much of our equipment that's currently being stored outside, get it covered, just to prolong the life. And so, if this moves forward, will we work with our staff to finalize more of a master plan for the whole site? That, the site around recycling has previously been used for storage, although, you know, two buildings not in great shape, and so I think we would master plan that for storage or other Public Works purposes. So I think if we are just trading site for site, we have the same amount of room, so it's just a matter of seeing how we program all of the, of the site appropriately.
I like the fact that you're looking at the size of the parking spots on that road from the very beginning, and I know I spoke to one of the crafters of the original bill. It was never the intention that people who live in RVs, or buses, or trailers are considered homeless. And we've allowed that to happen at our site. But that is, they're not actually considered homeless under, under the ORS. And so I think limiting the size of the parking spot, and also, you can only park there between certain hours. I think that is really more to the intent of providing space for those who are homeless. However, I have a little concern about what you're talking about, providing an overnight permit for people who are passing through. I don't know how you're considered homeless if you're traveling through the city. You're traveling, you're a traveler. Homeless means you don't have a place to live. And if you're traveling, I, I, I'd like us to discuss that more, because I kind of don't see that.
So this came up, for anyone that listened to the Supreme Court's arguments on the Grant's pass decision, this came up, which is, it's very difficult to put a definition to someone being homeless, because if I have a place to stay tonight, I'm not homeless, if I don't tomorrow, I am homeless. And if I get a place to stay the following night, I'm not, and so it can change from time to time. And so, but what I will say is, well, going back, or the first ordinance and policy that we passed stated this was for, to provide a place for local residents experiencing homelessness to have a place to stay, but was, the intention was not for those from outside the area. That was removed, because that's not, that does not meet the definition of both what the courts have said and what the state legislature has said, which is that we cannot enforce through civil or criminal penalties someone sleeping in any public space if there isn't a spot for them. So let's say someone was hitchhiking from Seattle to San Francisco, and they were coming through Seaside. If they don't have a place to sleep, they would have a legal right to sleep in any city property or public property if we did not provide a space for them. So the idea is, we would have a space for them, meet the intent of the law, but not necessarily roll out the welcoming act to say, hey, stay here for three weeks, it's, we have a space for you, so you're not sleeping downtown, or in one of our parks, but the hope or the expectation is that you continue on your travels.
I also don't think it's unreasonable to think that we may have situations where somebody needs to get out of a dangerous situation for a night or two, and to be able to have a place that allows them the right to do that.
But we are not, but this is not the first resort, this is the last resort. If somebody's getting out of a dangerous situation, we give money to the harbor to do their work. There's the, there's helping hands, there's CCA.
But those, those people may not know where those abilities are, but by talking to the police and going through this process, they may be able to get that information, and be able to move towards.
And get, get help, because they do work more than, you know, an eight-to-five job.
Sure, and one of the things that we have discussed doing, and we'll see if it pans out, but if we are able to contract with a third-party provider for the camp management, one of our thoughts is that they would be the ones to issue any three-week permits, and then our police department is only able to do the one-night ones. So if you want a permanent spot, so let's say, as an example, we're a partner with Clots of Community Action. In order to participate in our program, and to receive a three-week permit, you're going to have to speak to someone at Clots of Community Action. They're gonna be talking to you about resources and other things that are available to you, and it's not just to give me my, my location.
But I think our intent still is that the administration of this, we're trying to take out of public safety and out of the police department. So I think as we look at the whole package, we, you know, if you're this, you go here, if you're this, you go here. I'm not sure that that's the best thing for the person in need, or even for our, our administration or our police department. So I really want us to look at how we design that. I also would hope that before we kind of make final decisions, we wait and, and see what does the Supreme Court end up saying about all this. Because we know what the arguments were, we know what their questions were, but we don't know what they're gonna come out with. And no matter what they come out with, we still do have to deal with what did Oregon Legislature put into action? And is any of that gonna have to be then changed by the legislature?
Yeah, so anything that we propose now are things that keep us in compliance with. Yeah, so anything that we propose now are things that would keep us in compliance with the current law and current, um, court rulings. Um, and then we would, if any of that changes in the future, we'd obviously review our, our policies and see if there are different options, uh, moving forward. Um, on the site plan, realistically, there, there's some work to get this done. And we'd be shooting for, um, you know, having this up and running by next fall. Um, but, but, uh, using the current locations as the art until we can get this built. The one thing about the police department, um, Chief will be the first one to say that if they can not be involved, um, he'd give his, his thumbs up on that.
I know.
That being said, when you find someone sleeping where they shouldn't be at eleven o'clock at night, you can't, um, and you don't want them to be there. You can't say contact Clots of Community Action or some other provider who may or may not, or is likely not available at that time. So the police officers who will be the ones enforcing the no camping elsewhere need to have a tool that they can use to encourage someone to, um, you know, leave wherever they're illegally.
What I don't wanna see is that the cities around us, Cannon Beach and Gearhart in particular, find somebody and say, oh, you can go sleep in Seaside for the night and send them here, not even knowing whether we have a campsite available.
I would hope that doesn't happen. Uh, however, if that were to happen today as we have a camp, they, they would be issued a three week. And so I think the proposal is there's an option for just a one night. And hopefully that reduces, um, people, number of people that are not from this area who want to make this thing a home.
My thoughts are this location, obviously not perfect, but it does keep us in compliance with Oregon state law. I think it's, as you've said many times, the best of many bad options. Um, I know, you know, obviously putting the burden on Public Works, you know, that's a big burden. But I would rather do that than, you know, residents of Seaside, shelter, sheltering that burden.
If we're just, uh, and all that kind of stuff, then you're not allowed to be in there. We could issue the citation. If they wanted to challenge that, that's when the court proceeding would come in and there's a, a process in the back.
Chief.
That's where that process...
Chief, I think the question is if we suspended them from the camp, but they end up camping at Broadway Park or in the Mill Ponds, what tools do we have at that point?
That's where...
That's what you're saying. Mm-hmm.
And it could be, we could look at other things like trespassing and other things like that if we find them in places that they can't be.
Mm-hmm. So the citation would basically say, you broke this rule. This is, yeah, okay.
Um, it's not going to by any means, um, a permanent suspension from the camp does not mean that, um, city's done dealing with them.
No, I understand that.
The nature...
The other thing in, if you're thinking about the process, let's say the citation means that you are banned from the camp for three days. That means they've got to take all of their stuff and leave the camp. They can't just leave it there and like they're on vacation from the camp.
Correct. Yep. Um, so some of the other proposed rule changes, um, that we've discussed, want to run by the council. Um, uh, any unauthorized people found in the camp will be trespassed. We've had some, we had some rules previously put on. Um, because of the location and it's proximate to the route, sometimes it's been difficult to identify. At the same time, uh, there's been some lack of clarity on, on the staff side as to whether or not what, what we're willing to enforce there. And I think we would clearly mark, um, you know, you, uh, you'd be trespassed from this camp. I think the other thing that we would put in the rules is that if a camper allows an unauthorized person onto their site, they're responsible for that and that would be a camp rule violation. So oftentimes we get the, I don't know who this is, it doesn't matter. If there's someone inside your tent, um, that's not on the list, um, that can lead to your suspension as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, possession of stolen property, um, would result in an automatic suspension from the camp. Um, another one, uh, is that campers may be suspended from the program for refusal to accept shelter elsewhere when offered. That is something that is, if you read the recent changes in Portland, that is one of the changes they've implemented. And so we've had people say, I don't want to go to the Columbia Inn or, or, uh, Helping Hands or somewhere else. There's beds available and we refer them there and, and they've chosen, they're more comfortable here. And that could be an immediate suspension from the, from the program. Again, as you mentioned, Council Morrison, this is the place of last resort, not the, you know, choose, choose to be here and optional and things like that. And, um, a couple of other changes. So I think I've mentioned these on, on topic of vehicles. We'd move the camp, camp, the vehicle camping, if you have an U V, we'd provide the right parking spaces. We'd limit the size of the vehicles and only allow them to park, uh, in designated period, periods at night. Uh, and also impose and, 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 and sign the area for steep fines for unauthorized parking. And we could look at a special designation, so similar to parking in a fire zone or something like that.
And only one vehicle per person.
That's a good one. We will make a mental note to add that. Um, other, okay, so we talked about site changes. So we would add lighting to this proposed area. If you look on this map, there's a little red line connecting the corner of the camp to the Public Works building.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we'd run electrical, probably put a pole there on the corner. We would add lighting to the camp. We would add video surveillance. Um, both for us to be able to review incidents that happened, but also hopefully just as a deterrent of, um, illegal activities and of, uh, you know, breaking rules. So again, we see a, a, a car coming illegally, even if we don't catch them and even if we don't get the license plate.
We have the video.
They go into a particular camp's tent, that can be a violation for that camper. Uh, I think I mentioned this, uh, that the possibility of the one day permits being issued by the police department and the more permanent ones would have to go through the service provider. Again, the idea there is to get them, they have to be working and be in contact with the service providers. Again, the whole point of this is to encourage, um, their acceptance of help and services, um, when available. Um, right now, we have a prohibition on anything outside of their tents. And that has proved to be, um, extremely difficult to enforce. Um, we hope by moving away from the recycling yard, there will be less collection, but we know there will still be some. And so with a more permanent designated area for each camper, I think, um, that's one area where we loosen up on it. And it's basically as long as it's kept within your designated spot, it's not a health hazard, it's not a fire hazard. Um, we don't care as much. I think the one thing we would say is we want it to be covered. So whether they have tarp or things like that, and again, just for the, keeping it somewhat more, uh, cleaner and, uh, looking nicer for the campers there and for others as well. And then one of the other rules we would like to implement is that basically any items found outside of the, their designated sites are subject to immediate confiscation and or disposal. So it may just be Public Works is driving through to do something, something's down there, it goes right to the dumpster. And that's something that they would agree to when they, um, when they issue their permit. So there's not a, who does this belong to? And let's figure out, that's just one of the rules. If it's outside of there, it's gone. And I think that's one of those things where as much as we enforce it, I think it'll help regulate behavior, um, um, in camper rules.
I know that, um, several of the, uh, people who are camping also have jobs in town. And, um, you're, what you mentioned, the requirement that they be working with a service provider. I think that holds whether or not you have a job.
I think that could work. And it's not necessarily the requirement you have to be working with them other than you've got to go through them to get the permit. And so you may have to listen to that, well, do you know this is available and this is available and things like that. It's not that we're saying you have to be enrolled, enrolled in a certain program. That may be too high of a barrier for the current law. But again, um, sometimes to talk to the right people, make the connections.
I don't think it's too high a barrier to, um, to be saying that you have to be working with a service provider because the case management part of it, where the ser- service providers know who you are, what's available out there and can say, oh, there's now housing available here and that would be good for you. You refuse that? Okay. What, what's going on here?
That's, that's the hope.
Because the point of this is to get them into housing.
Yeah. Again, I think our whole point is we don't want to be the enablers of, um, of, uh, illegal activity, of addiction and things like that. We want to have our policies and our program incentivize people to get the help, accept the help, accept options when those are made available. We can't force them to do that, but we can, um, put all the incentives in place.
Strongly encourage.
I like this plan.
Yes.
So next steps are to create the budget, figure out, um, I'd strongly suggest you talk to the owner of Truckee and the home and the owner of the facility. So we don't have, uh, the problem we have before where they said we just did it.
I think we work with them, we put the budget together.
I think that's the only three I can think are there.
One thing about Truckee's that I think is worth noting is they do benefit from the campers. They do a lot of business at Truckee's.
Oh, they do.
So while they're the one business that it borders, I feel that they do make some on the backend, so.
Um, I think we'll come back. I anticipate, well, part of this, we need to decide what we're, uh, staff is gonna work on what we're gonna do over the summer. And so to the extent that we can make, implement some of these policies sooner than later, we will. And so we'll, we will likely come back prior to the site being ready for changes to the ordinance and or, um, policy. So we will work on that. Um, it's also likely that we would, if we need to get through this summer, that we would start implementing the plan from two meetings ago, which is get people off of Avenue S and, and, and put some of them behind, uh, on the new site we acquired. So just moving them off of there. Um, which the feedback we got from neighbors was, we don't like the plan, but it was better than what's currently happening. And so that may be an interim fix, um, that we do between now and whenever the site's ready.
And we're doing an incremental move that way.
Yeah.
And, yeah, trying to make it better.
And we anticipate, um, in the next, um, next, a couple of weeks, doing a, a move out and a cleanup of, of the camp. Um, that's come at the recommendation of Officer Knox. And so that's something that we're gonna be planning on doing. And, um, and it may be in the space that we're working there. In fact, one of the things of this space and having permanent sites would be the ability to, um, uh, say an individual needs to move out for the day so it can be cleaned up. But another person who's maintaining their site appropriately does need to. So we don't need to do a whole camp, again...
Right.
incentivizing a better behavior, so.
And I just wanna again give, uh, kudos to Officer Knox. He's, he's doing a very good job.
Job.
Absolutely.
Good. We're adjourned and, uh, we got eight minutes. Doesn't look like we even have video. Ken, go.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Ken, you wanna take care of this? We'll take care of this.